Good morning. I want to welcome everyone to Commissioner's Court. And before we get started, we have Brother Brent Williams and Dr. Tony Romans with us today. Dr. Romans is going to share a little information with us right quick, and of course, Mr. Williams will be leading us in the prayer.
Thank you. Thank you. It's my privilege just to make you aware and invite you to our National Day of Prayer. Myself and other pastors and Christians all over the county will be meeting at noon at the west side of the courthouse on the steps there. We do it at lunch hour, so you can come for any part of that that you can. But we'd love for you to come and join us as we pray for our nation, as we certainly understand the need. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Romans. Commissioner McCann, you'll lead us in the pledges after the prayer.
Let's pray. Father, we just know based on your word that prayer is not optional for the Christian, and we just know that you have commanded us to humble ourselves under the mighty hand of God, that we may be exalted in due time by casting all of our cares onto you because you care for us. We also know that we're supposed to trust you with all our heart. We're not supposed to lean on our own understanding, but we're to acknowledge you, we're to be praying to you, and that you would make the path straight because of that relationship. And we just pray that over everyone in this room now and in this county. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Brother Williams, Dr. Romans, thank y'all. All right. Well, the time is 9:02, and we do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting to order. Are there any citizens' comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioner's Court on April the 26th, 2022. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments?
Hearing non-judges, I move we approve the Commissioner's Court minutes from regular session on April the 26th, 2022, as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully, seconded by Commissioner Spivey, to approve the minutes as presented from the previously held meeting of Commissioner's Court on April the 26th, 2022. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item number two is to consider and take action to proclaim May 15th through the 21st, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week. And we have again with us Mr. Bill Sickle with the Sons of the American Revolution.
Good morning, Court.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am still Bill Sickle, and I still represent Sons of the American Revolution. And as you know, we have a saying that goes something like this, is that we honor our patriot ancestors by recognizing today's heroes and patriots. And that's what we're here today for. We're here to recognize the emergency medical services. The emergency medical services, as we know it today, has longstanding traditions that date back hundreds of years. Throughout history, there has been some form of EMS, whether it be a single individual in the village providing aid as a Good Samaritan or chariots on the battlefield, transporting wounded soldiers to an aid station. There have been several models of EMS through the years, and with trial and error, scientific research, advancement in medical care practices, and more structured foundation, EMS has become what it is today and continues to advance. I brought a little list of EMS firsts from the Trial and Error Department. After the relative success of casualty clearing horse-drawn ambulances in the war between the states, the first civilian ambulance service was provided in Cincinnati in 1865. The attendants had no medical training beyond basic bandaging. When New York City launched its first ambulance service in 1869, the horse-drawn vehicles sounded a gong to get folks out of the way. Its first aid bag contents included a sump pump, bandages and sponges, handcuffs, a straitjacket, and a quart of brandy. The first documented use of an air ambulance occurred during the Siege of Paris, when balloons were used to evacuate more than 160 soldiers from a besieged city in 1870. The first motorized ambulances appeared in 1899 in Chicago and in New York in 1900. In 1947, Texas became the first state to pass legislation requiring ambulances to be equipped with basic medical supplies, as well as requiring the ambulance attendants to be trained in basic first aid. The first TV show that introduced America to EMS was Rescue Eight, which aired on NBC in 1958 and 59. It chronicled the exploits of the Los Angeles County Fire Department rescue squads. The first defibrillator for use in a field weighed 150 pounds, operated from car batteries, and was installed in an ambulance in Ireland in 1965. In 1968, the nation's first call to 9/11 is received at a police station in Haylerville, Alabama. In June of 69, the Miami Fire Department became the first fire department in the United States to successfully revive a lifeless patient in the field through defibrillation. In 1971, the U.S. Department of Transportation published a national curriculum for EMTs, the first national standards for the education of EMS professionals. Many consider this document the birth of modern EMS. EMS will continue to be on the front line of emergency medicine as the field expands into coming future. Physicians involved with pre-hospital care will be paramount in providing the support and knowledge required to help EMS systems grow, as evidenced by the recognition of EMS as an officially, as an official clinical subspecialty. And as a young police officer, I can't tell you how many times I yelled "Send me a 10-52 and rescue" into my radio. But I can tell, but I can tell you, I was damn glad when, when they showed up. Paramedics and EMTs, they're a whole different breed of people, and we're lucky to have them around. And I'd like to go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas in 1973, President Gerald Ford authorized Emergency Medical Services Week, and since that year and every year thereafter, the nation marks the third week of May to celebrate EMS practitioners who risk their own lives and health to protect others. And whereas, emergency medical services is a crucial public service. And whereas, the dedicated members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, those members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers. Now therefore, we, County Judge Commissioners of Henderson, Henderson County, Texas, do hereby proclaim May 15th through May 21st as Emergency Medical Services Week, with the theme EMS Strong: Call to Care, and extend appreciation to all emergency medical service workers for their conscientious emergency medical services to the citizens and visitors of Henderson County, Texas.
Fantastic, Mr. Sickle. You have continued in what Mr. Starr used to do in giving us more than just a document, but to give us the, this anecdotal information, historical information that really brings context to actually what it is these resolutions are about. Court, are there any comments?
I'd just like to say thank you to all the EMS out there. They do a lot for the community.
Commissioner?
I'd like to also say thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you. Y'all do a lot. And I think everybody in this room has probably needed them at one time, or been to their, somebody that they know that's needed them and couldn't do without them. Thank y'all.
Mr. Sickle, thank you, sir, very much. Court, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCann, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Excuse me. To proclaim May the 15th through the 21st of 2022 as Emergency Medical Services Week here in Henderson County. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Again, thank you, sir.
Back to Court.
Item three, consider and take action on refund request for overpayment of taxes for the Henderson County Tax Assessor Collector.
Good morning.
Good morning. I have two refund checks totaling $10,109.69 for court approval. They're both due to a DV exemption being granted.
Court, questions? Comments?
And that, that is disabled, yes?
It sure is.
Any other comments? Entertain the motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the refund request for overpayment of taxes in Henderson County Tax Assessor Collector.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, to approve the refund request for the overpayment of taxes from the Henderson County Tax Assessor Collector as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four, consider and take action on request of the District Attorney for expenditure of seizure funds for employee insurance benefits. Have any more from the District Attorney's Office? Ms. Lee, could you speak toward this action?
Yes, this is a request that, I'm sorry, Jenny, can we be here this morning? That she has an employee coming on. Pardon, Senator, it's getting to, um, health insurance for her lives. She just wants to use some funds to cover that. We'll be court-fulfilling on any kind of salary benefit.
Questions, Court?
So I know that the seizure funds can be used at any time for anything at the DA's request?
They have, they have discretion, as Ms. Lee said. They have complete discretion over the funding, except in areas of salaries and benefits. That has to come before the court, and in this instance, supplementing their insurance until the, the county's insurance kicks in, because it's three months. This is to cover this employee using seizure funds to cover that first three months of insurance.
Yes.
It's, it's an incentive to bring quality individuals to the county.
It's, it's two months on here, but like I say, it is 90 days for the county. Should, I think it was already here.
It's already here, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Entertain the motion.
I'll make a motion to allow the DA seizure fund to supplement insurance for two months.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Spivey, to approve the request from the District Attorney's Office for an expenditure, expenditure of the seizures funds for supplement of employee health insurance benefits for two months. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. And item five is consider and take action to approve a cellphone for a newly filled Assistant District Attorney position. Ms. Lee?
Same employee, and which has just requested a phone. He said personal phone, and we can track, keep an archive, he takes business.
Okay.
Do you know how many phones we have in the county now?
Four.
Eleven hundreds, ten, thirty.
Yeah.
Eleven hundreds.
Yeah. That was another one of those unfunded mandates. Looks good on paper.
Mm-hmm. It was. What the Commissioner's referring to is, a couple of sessions ago, the legislature passed the law requiring that all data information, text information, be archived for open record purposes. The consequential effect of that was that anyone that works using cellphones as part of their job has to have this service, and therefore, personal phones are not the best thing to have all your data available to the public for. We have to provide this. So it has. It has increased the number of phones exponentially that the county has to provide. It's just the realities of doing business today. We all live on phones. So. Any other comments?
I'll make the motion to approve the cellphone for new district, Assistant District Attorney.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCann, seconded by Commissioner Tully, to approve the request from the District Attorney's Office for a cellphone for the newly, the new Assistant District Attorney position. All those in favor of the motion? Item passed. Various streets within the city of Enchanted Oaks located in Precinct Two. Commissioner?
Yes, Judge, this is the third yearly project that they want to complete. In your package, you can see the, the roads and the linear peak that, that will be worked, chip sealing. Then we'll be using the patch machines to do the curves at the intersection. And then also, it's 7,220 feet of roads in there. And then the city of Enchanted Oaks already has accounts set up with the pea gravel and the emulsion vendors, so they will be paying for all of the material. And they're just requesting our help dispersing it.
Questions for the Commissioner?
Do they already have the roads up to par for the chip seal?
Most of their roads in there are hot mix asphalt, and so they're going just to try to seal that. Because they don't have $250,000 for a mile road.
Yeah. I just wanted to know they were ready.
Any further questions? Entertain the motion.
Judge, I move we approve the interlocal agreement with the city of Enchanted Oaks to chip seal 7,920 feet of various roads inside the city with the judge's authorization to sign.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and seconded by Commissioner Spivey, to approve the interlocal agreement to assist a governmental entity for chip sealing of various streets within the city of Enchanted Oaks with the judge's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item number seven is consider and take action to enter into an interlocal cooperation agreement for labor and equipment use with the city of Enchanted Oaks for a term to expire December 31, 2023, located in Precinct Two. Commissioner?
Yeah, Judge, this is the same thing that we've been doing with all the cities within Precinct Two. It's just kind of ironic that both of them came with the same minutes and everything. But this is, the interlocal cooperative is where we're going to use this to help them in case of scorn damage, or they have maybe a big tree that falls or something like that. And it's the two-year agreement for labor and equipment use. And this agreement has nothing to do with the interlocal that we just passed.
Questions for the Commissioner? Entertain the motion.
I move we approve the interlocal cooperative agreement for labor and equipment use with the city of Enchanted Oaks for a term to expire December 31, 2023, with the judge's authorization to sign.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and seconded by Commissioner Richardson, to, to approve the inter, the interlocal cooperation agreement for labor and equipment use with the city of Enchanted Oaks for a term to expire December 31, 2023, with the judge's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item eight is receive financial reports, and there are none. Item nine is consider and take action on payroll disbursements and accounts cash sheet, and there are none. Item 10 is consider and take action on submitted contracts, and we have a few of these, yes? We have, we have one with AMS. Isn't this in the county clerk's office?
Right. I'm having to change credit processors for Eagle Recorder, and this is just an agreement for pricing services. And the contract will probably come next week.
Before the contract can be drawn up, they need the approval of the pricing fees. And our county attorney has looked over this, and has confirmed that this is a part of the process. And for those wondering what this is, this is in association with the Eagle system that we went under contract some time ago with Tyler Technology for land records, Commissioner's Court's minutes.
Is, are these passed on to the customer, or is that?
Yeah.
So if our document costs $10, and they write a check, they have to write it for $11.50?
No, this is for credit card use.
Oh.
If you did do a E-check, it would be a part of that.
Okay.
But if it was just mainly credit card use and debit card, if someone writes a check over the counter, that's not, not the issue.
Yeah, this is, yeah, I'm not having the E-check.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, it does stay definitely wanted. Any, any other thoughts, comments? This is a crucial piece to, to get that project moving. Without this, we won't be able to, to implement. The current, the two vendors we currently have, one refuses, and the other one, we're having no response from. Any other thoughts?
So move.
Second.
With authorization.
Judge's authorization to sign.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Tully, seconded by Commissioner Spivey, to approve the pricing structure agreement with AMS for payment processing services, with the judge's authorization to sign. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item 11 is consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits, and we have a couple of those today. Commissioner?
Yes, Court, I have a, a activity line request for a Virginia Hill Water Supply. It'd be on County Road 4402. It's a three-inch water main that they're going to put in. And it's going to run down, most of it's going to run down 4402 on private property, and they're going to get down in front of the gas plant, and it's a wooded area. And they're asking to put this up next to the fence on the county right-of-way for about 800 foot.
Questions for the Commissioner? Entertain the motion.
Hearing non-judges, I'd like to approve the utility line activity for Virginia Hill Water Supply on County Road 4402 with the Commissioner's authorization to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner McCann, to approve the proposed utility line agreement with Virginia Hill Water Supply Corporation for a three-inch water main placement on County Road 4402 with the Commissioner's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Commissioner?
Yes, Court, the same ones with Virginia Hill Water Supply. They want to put a two-inch main. It's actually a loop that's going to go in between 4705 and 4700, and to connect two lines together, and be one road bore under 4706. And I think they're going to put all this on the county right-of-way. There was a, some customers that would not give right-of-way. They didn't want the water on their place. So it's all going to be within the county right-of-way.
Questions for the Commissioner?
Just a new line, or a replacement?
New line, new line. Putting in new lines.
Any other questions? Entertain the motion.
I'd like to make a motion for Virginia Hill Water Supply for utility line activity on County Road 4705, from 4700 to 4704, with one road bore under 4706, with the Commissioner's authorization to sign.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner Spivey, to approve the notice of utility, a proposed utility line activity agreement with Virginia Hill Water Supply Corporation for a two-inch water line to be laid along County Road 4705, and with one road bore under 4706, with the Commissioner's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. Item 12 is consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. Ms. Lee?
Yeah, we just have a few of these today. It's just most of them.
Questions for Ms. Lee? Entertain the motion.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and seconded by Commissioner Richardson, to approve the budget amendments as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item 13 is consider and take action on payment of bills, and we have several today. Mr. Carpenter? Mr. Carpenter?
If Tuesday's our first day to set fees 2022 in the amount of $101,599.16.
Court, are there any questions concerning the state fees?
I'll make a motion to pay the state fees of $101,599.16.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCann and seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the state fees in the amount of $101,599.16 as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously.
So we have fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $190,753.24.
Commissioner Spivey, questions?
I have no questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tulley?
I have none.
Commissioner McCann?
I have none.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
Entertaining motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 bills in the amount of
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Spivey to approve the fiscal year 2022 bills in the amount of $190,753.24. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item 14 is consider and take action on submitted plaits. No plaits. And then for the fun part of the show, item 15, open and consider bids.
I have two bids that are to present today to be, to get authorization to release. One is for road materials, delivery and pickup, and the other is for haul and transport services. We can reveal them in whatever order y'all wish.
Commissioners, questions or comments concerning the two proposed RF?
Bids.
Pieces?
No, the invitation for bids.
The invitation for bids and specifications. If there's no questions or comments?
One deal I didn't remind you of is I think I turned in some interlocal agreements and I think Texas bid said if we turn those in, that they will honor the interlocal agreement. Those cities and stuff, interlocal agreements with us, they'll cover our bid under umbrella for them.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So on the road material, you said that, let me get those. Don't put a hauling on here. But doesn't like, right now, our bids have like Arcosa and whoever's aggregate haulers and all them people, don't they just, don't they bid it with trucking it to us?
If it, currently now, yes, it is all one bid. For this period that we are about to go out for haul and transport services will be separate from the road materials. Now, if it is an actual road materials vendor and they provide delivery service, then that will be part of the road materials bid. If the vendor only hauls road material, they don't own a road materials plant yard, whatever, I don't know the correct terminology. But if they don't actually provide the material, if they go to a quarry, pick it up, go to a plant, pick it up, and all they're doing is transporting it, then that is a totally
So ABC Trucking wants to haul pea gravel for us?
Then they will submit a bid on the haul and transport services bid.
And then we got to choose another quarry to?
For pea gravel, yes.
Yeah, so we'll have three POs?
Yes. We'll have one for the material and one for the transport services.
What you're saying is?
Which is what I do on most of mine already.
That's what I do too.
Like I buy my pea gravel with a PO and I pay my hauler with another PO. Like if I use S&amp;S or if I use Titan or whoever, I use a PO for them and I use a PO for?
I think S&amp;S, well, we have one bid here and let's stay on the road material bid. The road material bid is for those providers, the ones that are creating the material and you know, and all of us know that those that are manufacturing hot mix, oil sand, whatever, they provide transportation services. So that is the road material bid. Set aside, no changes with that, is that correct?
Correct. So if they are providing the material and they are going to deliver it or we are going to go pick it up from them.
Right.
That's what this road material is for.
So that's the road material bid. Haul and transport bid is for that service. If we so choose to procure through the aggregate bid, are we still doing the aggregate portion? That would be your, your flex base, your pea gravel, all of those items.
That's flex base, pea gravel, those things are all part of the road material.
Okay, so we're bringing them all together now into the road material?
Yes.
That's a deviation from previously.
We've been, all the aggregates, road materials, emulsions, oils, all of those are together and have been together for a few years now.
Okay, I haven't bought any in a long time, so.
Yeah.
Forgot. Used to, we had them broken out.
Yeah.
And so we brought them all together. Okay.
Anything that has to do with road construction as far as any type of material part is all one and is part of the road materials bid.
So as the commissioner was saying here, an end of a company that is a trucking company who is responding to the bid as a provider of road material, I think that's where it was kind of getting, you use the example S&amp;S. S&amp;S used to bid a pea gravel bid and in that services were as well. So what you're saying is, is now we're doing strictly in a pea gravel situation, S&amp;S can't do that. They, they may bid the pea gravel, but they have to bid the hauling.
Separate.
And when?
S&amp;S is the road material vendor. They have pea, they have the quarry of pea gravel. No, then they are a haul vendor. They are haul and transport vendor.
So, so any bid submitted by S&amp;S as providing pea gravel?
Would be the haul and transport service.
That's what we've been doing.
But that's not what she's saying. That's not what she's saying. How it's been done for years, that's how they build it, is what is being described and what she's trying to gain control of. Because S&amp;S would get awarded the pea gravel bid and we would think one PO will know. They go buy the pea gravel and then send their trucks to go get it and we have to, and do two POs there. So what's trying to do here is to truly break it into a hauling service. Is that correct?
Yes.
But S&amp;S could also, look, could also bid the pea gravel and hauling if they, you know, but their, you know, like, the quarry's going to be 11 cents and S&amp;S is going to be 13 plus the hauling.
That's not what she's saying. You got to own the quarry.
You know, if they?
I don't think they necessarily have to own it.
No, if they're bidding pea gravel at, and I'm just making up numbers.
They're saying they're supplying it.
Yeah, if they're supplying the pea gravel and they're bidding delivery of pea gravel at $12.50 a ton, I don't know, I'm just making up numbers here. Then they're going to bid a delivery of pea gravel, of road materials at $12.50. If all they're doing is hauling whatever road material or if they're going to haul a piece of equipment for us, any type of hauling or transport service, then they will do the haul and transport.
The haul transport is just specifically that, a contract hauler, no matter what it is. I mean, I understand.
Okay, sorry.
No, no, no. Yeah, things have changed enough where we are transporting a lot more material that is not from, that is not your normal vendor provided material.
Right.
And that's why the need for the haul and transport bid.
Yeah, if it's a delivery of the material that they are bidding, then we do have the opportunity for them to bid for the delivery of the road materials. So that is the cost for them, for the material and the delivery together. Then we also have just for the delivery cost or the hauling.
It's still not going to count, health accounts payable when you have a vendor that, like S&amp;S, you're still going to be writing two POs, so.
Well, if they bid it as a delivery of 1350 a ton, then they need to bill it as 1350 a ton.
We've seen before that Arcosa would give us a price on pea gravel and then we'd have a hauling bid too. And if we done two POs, sometimes we save a dollar, a dollar a ton on it.
Yeah.
So, but if we went straight to aggregate haulers or S&amp;S, the price was a little higher if they handled all the paperwork, so.
So they have to invoice exactly as they bid. So if they bid it as delivery of, you know, flex base at 1150 delivered, then they have to invoice it as flex base 1150 a ton.
For the crowd, this has been a long-going argument for a number of years, so bear with
And we have met Letitia, myself, Commissioner Richardson, Commissioner Spivey, and the ladies at each one of the precincts and talked about, you know, how this was going to work, how it, you know, how to do the purchase orders so that they made sense for all of us and how it would work, you know, for the bid process. And we got it all, you know, got our heads wrapped around it pretty good.
Any other questions or comments on the two bid specifications?
These, oh, sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
Do you, do you order the cold mix in bulk that we can use to use for potholes? Is it on here?
Well, she just got it down as cold mix. They've got the?
It's got another name though.
Yeah, UPM, but that's, that's designating a brand name is what she said. So it's really cold mix and they can bid on it as a cold mix and then I guess we can accept their bid because it is really a different specification. I don't know how we word that to get a different spec. It's still called a cold mix. It's just, it's, it's different, got a different oil and stuff in it.
Is this that material that comes in sacks on pallets?
Yeah, basically the same.
In climate weather repairs, basically.
Yeah, the UPM is Unique Paving Materials, which is the company that actually sells it. So that was, and that was one of the discussions that we had in our meeting because it does signify a brand name. So without finding out exactly what the formula is on how to, how it's made, the only way to really not utilize a brand name is to just do cold mix and list it that way.
One thing I didn't, on this rip wrap, iron ore or limestone?
Yes, sir.
I don't know, I think we need to add on their available sizes because there's all different sizes of rip wrap. And that way they'll give us a price on their different size, size ranges that they have. Other thing, on the, on these asphalt products, can we require on a, send a material safety data sheet on them?
Yes, and that is in the general specifications.
That'd be sent with their, their bid?
Their bid.
Anything further?
I did want to double check on the timeline in the packet attached calendar schedule. If these packets are approved today, the fast track for this would be to run the ad in the paper this Saturday and next Saturday, the 14th. The soonest that we could do an opening would be the 24th and then present those bids on the 31st. And then whatever was awarded on the 31st, I don't know when you guys want to start that contract. I mean, we can try to start it as of the first or, I don't know if you want to give it a week to get the notices. I mean, I can email the notices out to the companies, but I don't know what it takes for them to get all their stuff in order, so.
Yeah, most of these were on a, on a monthly schedule with them on paying. So if it did start on the first, we can get all the paperwork straightened out before the billing comes in, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
And do we, do we want it for 12 months or till the 2023? I don't know if they go out that far with the prices on.
And for many years, we, our, our road materials bid went from July 3rd to June and then at s?
About 10 years ago, we moved them.
To January and so, I mean, we can, we can do them on whatever time period you guys want, but I thought the same thing as you, do we want to try to, you know, do like a year and a half? But then I was, had the same thought as Commissioner.
Can we give an option for another year?
Yeah, but shouldn't we have been doing this in September, October to get prepared for a?
For January, yeah.
We ran into this situation, good Lord, not long after we went into January, moving the January deadline. And what we ended up doing was awarding a shorter period to the lineup so we'd be ready to go again at the January period of time. All of them are viable. Our vendors are very good at working with us of honoring, honoring the bids until we can get things caught up. It's really to the discretion of the court. We felt the January time for bidding of oil products was the most advantageous to reach a savings because that's when you don't have the peak driving year, there's other, other things that come into play as far as demand for oil products that we always felt like got to say more economical entry into the market, so it's up to the court.
Yeah, we have seen a lot of changes in, since the, we moved to the January, we see a lot of price fluctuations between January and June. So, you know, I mean, that's, that's the only thing is we can move it to a January, whether we try to stretch it for a year, six months.
That's liquid asphalt vendors that mainly have the fluctuation, isn't it?
Well, we've had a couple because it also affects the fuel price too. So some of our delivery costs have changed as well. I mean, I would, if you want, you know, hard numbers, I can get those for you.
No, no, no.
But, so, I mean, it's, however you guys want to do it, but if, when we run January to January, we do have cost changes, but the bids do seem to come in lower originally. And then we do the price fluctuations throughout the year, so I really think it kind of ends up in the same place.
We have hard enough to get the bids as it is. We're going to make them go six months and then redo another one in September? So we'll be ready for January? Start June, start June varsity go for a year. Can we give them an option for a second year?
We can do it for a year and then once the, you know, we can get nine months into it and then ask them, hey, do you want? it and then ask them, hey, do you want to extend for a year? If we do awards for multiple vendors, we may have, if we award three, two may want to, one may not want to extend. So then the court has to decide, okay, do we only want to extend those two and just drop off that one?
But we don't have to extend if we don't want to either do.
Right. You can say, okay, well, we'll just turn around and re-bid everything. But yes, the court has the option to extend up to five years total. So if you award the original bid for two years, then you can extend three years. If you award a year and a half, then you can extend three and a half years, so.
Why are we so late in getting started when we should have been done this in September, October?
Just different things have come up and it's gotten pushed and changed and then deciding whether or not to keep the delivery and transport with the road materials and how to split that apart, just trying to figure out which is the best way to handle the different changes and stuff that needed to happen.
So have we come to a decision on the timeline?
I think we're set to go with it in June and see what we get for a year. At least we're going to know what we're going to be paying in budget time, budget time in June, too, so we're going to have it ahead of budget time anyway.
I agree with that.
Okay, so I'm hearing one year, Court?
Anything else?
Yeah, the haul, do we have to approve that?
We do, we need to. She's making the changes here.
Right.
As we're, as we were speaking and if we can get approval of the specifications that we've discussed here, then she can move forward and get it in the, get it out of the budget.
I'm going to approve the request for bids and bids beginning in June 1st, by the authority of 2023.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCann, seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the bid specifications and request for road material and haul transport bid invitations spanning a year of June 1 to May 31, 2023. Any further comments? All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously.
Thanks, Court.
Now, do we have to go with the haul? Did you have a haul one in there, too?
I do. The timeline is set to be the same as road materials, so the only thing is if there's any changes to the response form as far as it's set up to be for road materials or anything else that may need to be transported in or haul. We have the response forms set for, they can respond as their rate per hour, their rate per mile, their rate per truckload, per ton, per cubic yard, or any other type of rate they may possibly want to come up with. The decision to do it, to have the multiple ways to respond is if it's a company that only wants to do local transports and hauls for us, then most of the time they will only want to do per hour as opposed to per mile or per ton. So that will keep the vendors that are just here local and only want to do our local and they can move on by the way that they charge and so we can kind of set up the different, what our needs are and what our vendors' needs are and we can award accordingly by what the different needs are.
Can, can we add one to say rate per day? There is a one that we've used that gives us a daily rate.
Okay. Sure, add that on there.
Anything else? We did, we do have a motion that was made by Commissioner McCann, seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve these specifications based on the one year's timeframe. All right. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Thank you very much for suffering through this with us.
Before we adjourn, can I make a statement?
Let me call it in the discussion portion. Item 16 is, is it a part of the haul and material and?
No, no.
Okay. Item 16, consider and take action to adjourn. Is there any discussion?
I would, I just wanted to say thank you to the EMS, Mr. Glover. He set up a date and sent someone over. Me and eleven of my employees took a four-hour CPR class and I just wanted to thank him. I should have done that earlier and I just skipped my mind. That's all.
Entertained motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, seconded by Commissioner McCann to adjourn. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes and we are adjourned at 9:54. Thank you.